Good morning, rather. Okay, welcome. It's Wednesday, January 27th at 11:00 a.m. And we are here for a boardwork session. I will go ahead and take roll call. I will go on the list that I have here on my screen in Blackboard. Ms. Omeche?
Here, good morning.
Ms. Omeche, are you with us hopefully?
Yes, good morning.
Good morning.
Sorry, I didn't realize I couldn't be here.
There you go, good morning. Ms. Tolan?
Good morning, I'm here as well.
Great. Ms. Corbett Sanders?
I am here, good morning.
Good morning. Mr. Fresh?
Good morning.
Good morning. Cohen?
Good morning, my dog is here too.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Good morning, everybody.
Ms. Sizemore Heiser, are you here? I believe you were.
Good morning, yes, I'm here.
Great. Dr. Anderson?
Good morning, hello, sorry, I was late signing on, hi.
Good. Ms. Bukarski?
Good morning, everyone.
Hello. And Ms. Darnett Copax?
Good morning.
Okay, great. We have a quorum, and I think that's everyone, actually. Okay, so today, if you didn't get enough of the budget last night with our public hearing, we've got more for you today. So, today is our second work session on the fiscal year 22 proposed budget. This is the budget that we're developing for next school year, which begin on July 1st. We had a public hearing last night where over 30 community members and advocates expressed their thoughts about the budget. Thank you for those who took the time to speak and also sent your comments as well. We did receive them if you've sent them. This morning, we'll hear a recap of the superintendent's proposed budget, as well as some more information about the recently announced second round of federal money, which is part of that Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund, or ESR, ESR-2, followed by information about extended learning opportunities that are being proposed for the summer or for consideration. But the main focus should be among school board members as to where we go from here with the proposed budget. And this is the only opportunity we have as a full board to meet prior to the February 18th action we must take to send this budget that meets the needs of SCPS over to the County Board of Supervisors for consideration for next year's school funding year. We'll have more context setting before we launch into the discussion portion of our meeting. And thank you to Dr. Braybrand and his leadership team members for being here to respond to any few clarifying questions that the board members may have. So I'll go ahead and turn it over to Ms. Burden, our Assistant Superintendent for Financial Services, for a brief recap of the proposed budget that we've seen. Thank you.
Good morning. If you can put the PowerPoint up, thank you so much. And go ahead and go to the next slide. Yeah, our agenda today is basically to, you know, to talk a little further about the superintendent's proposed budget, you know, of course, that, that's, you know, the majority of that will be school board discussion. We've also included some guiding questions, and we're going to go over some information about ESR-2, because remember, we just got notification about those funds on the 12th, I think. And then Dr. Presidio is going to do, provide information on extended learning, specifically summer programs. Next slide. And so the superintendent's proposed budget, you're used to seeing this slide. This just identifies where we are right now. It's a $3.1 billion budget, which is a net increase over the current year of about $400,000, or one hundredth of one percent. You know, we have, we do have some required adjustments like, you know, enrollment for preschoolers, healthcare increases, rate increases for utilities, those sorts of things. But we do have offsetting costs for that, so that actually nets to a negative number. The recurring adjustments are funded with repurposed funds, and so there's no cost to that. And then the superintendent identified a very select few investments that are $12.5 million, and so that nets to .4. And on the revenue side, you know, we are expecting a loss in State A compared to Fiscal 21. Our federal funding, at the point time that the budget was proposed, the federal funding was expected to reduce, because that's the reduction for the CARES-1 grant. And then, of course, our beginning balance and other revenue also were expected to reduce, so that the revenue increase is also just about $400,000. And that's with a county transfer request of 42.7. If you can go to the next slide. This is just like a little graphic that kind of shows what we're, need to do over the next few weeks. You know, today, January 27th, we're, you know, considering the Fiscal 22 superintendent's proposed budget. On February 18th, that will be the adoption. And then the county executive releases his budget on the 23rd. We have, the Board of Supervisors goes through its budget work sessions and its consideration of the budget and setting the tax rate. On May 4th, the school board will begin discussion about reconciliation to the funding levels. And then on May 20th is the adoption. And this chart is intended to show that, you know, one of the options is that you consider the superintendent's budget and decide to adopt that budget as your advertised budget with no changes. If you want to consider amendments, then you go down to the second, second line. You would need to provide any amendments for costing and, you know, help with language and that sort of thing on February 5th, to me, to the Budget Office, to provide that costing. But you should know that that will increase the county transfer request from 42.7 to a greater number. And then if consensus is achieved on any of those amendments, you would adopt again on February 18th the amended superintendent's proposed budget. And then the rest of it, you know, continues. If you decided to, well, either way, whether you decided to adopt the superintendent's proposed budget as is, or make amendments to it, at reconciliation is another opportunity to consider amendments. Of course, at reconciliation, they have to be revenue neutral, because at that point, our funding levels at the state and county both are known. You should also know that, you know, we, we may have to already consider reductions to meet those final funding levels, depending on where they, where they end up. And also, we'll have to consider what our plan is, our final plan for the ESR-2 funding. You know, there, there may be some opportunities to shift things, if that becomes necessary. But it's, it's just too soon to be able to come up with a definite plan as to how all that will play out. That's, that's part of how this, how this works. So, the decision flow chart was just kind of to give you a graphic of what will happen when, depending on whether you adopt the superintendent's proposed budget as is, or opt to, to put forth amendments and, you know, try to achieve some consensus on those amendments. If you could go to the next slide. Here are some guiding questions that, you know, you may want to ask yourself as, as you're discussing it this morning and afternoon. Does the superintendent's proposed budget essentially reflect your priorities? Is there consensus on the unfunded needs? What about employee compensation, extended learning opportunities, infrastructure investments in HVAC, those kinds of things? And are there any other priorities that, that need to be considered? Do you want to initiate amendments or accept the superintendent's proposed budget as presented? Next slide. And then there's the Elementary and Secondary Emergency Relief, ESR-2, is what it's commonly called. And again, just, it seems like last week, maybe it was the week before, that we just got notification that air amount is 84 million, 83 million for us and a million for City of Fairfax, who asked us to include them in our grant application package. So it's, it's really the 84 million. The timeline for the ESR-2 is till September 30 of 2023, so that's good news. And then the allowable use of funds is pretty much the same as with ESR-1, except for the, the last two. And, and the, 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 next to last one is about addressing learning loss. And so we're going to talk about that in, in a little more detail in just a minute. And then the last item is also new, and that is the infrastructure or HVAC, you know, items taking a priority for air quality improvement. Next slide. So, you know, a total of 84 million has been allocated from VDOE, but we're still in the planning stages. And so we don't have, we don't have, you know, a lot of detail to give you at this point in time. We have tried to categorize the areas of need. Learning loss, of course, being, being the top one with summer learning programs, school year learning loss, a remediation and intervention. Also, again, building infrastructure mitigation supplies, HEPA filters, those kinds of things, HVAC upgrades, compensation, a 2% bonus. You should know that ESR-2, it's not, a bonus for employees is not disallowed, but it has to be tied directly to COVID. So, it can't be a salary increase, it can't be a bonus. It has to be, you know, in recognition of additional work that, you know, frontline employees, teachers, those kinds of things, those kinds of staff have taken on as a result of the pandemic environment. You should also know that if, if, if it was desired that we use this grant funding to recognize the additional work, we still would not be eligible for the state funding that we're foregoing, because federal funds are not, they don't meet the definition of local match. But that is something that, that is on our radar, and so it's listed here. PPE supplies, you know, we have ample PPE supplies in the warehouse, out and distributed out to the schools. The, the challenge is, is that we haven't been in school enough, you know, fully operational, to have any ideas about usage patterns. And so that is still something that's on our radar, because if we, you know, if we continue to wear masks and those sorts of things well into the future, then that's something that will, that will ultimately become a concern. Technology, we didn't, we haven't yet provided new devices for grades PK through 2. So those items are on the list as well. And then there's some miscellaneous COVID support items that we're, that we're talking about. Next slide. And now I turn it over to Dr. Presidio, or Chairman?
Yeah, Ms. Burden, sorry, excuse me. I, I thought we were going to stop and pause and have the board conversation, and then after the break, discuss.
Whatever you want to do.
That would be great. Thank you so much. Thank you. It's helpful to hear about the ESR-2. So if we want, yes, thank you. So that was the recap of the proposed budget, as well as the update that we had requested about the ESR funds. And we will hear after the break that we're going to take a little later about the extended learning ideas for recovery of learning loss. So just to do the housekeeping here, so from now until 1, this is our time as a board to discuss, you know, what our thoughts and concerns are about the proposed budget. You know, are we satisfied with unfunded items? Are there particular things that we want to start to think about creating amendments for? And what are things that are unfunded that we really want to see? So this is time for us to have a conversation, and while staff is there, I really encourage us to talk amongst each other. It's something that we say that we want to do a lot, so we have the time now. We'll take a break at 1 for lunch, 1 to 1:30, and then reconvene to hear that next portion about the extended learning opportunities. And then at 2 o'clock, we're going to shift to hear about the developments for the anti-racist policy work that the board has asked for. So with that, I'll just say also that each member will have a first turn of three minutes, a second turn of two minutes, and that should give us a good amount of time. So please go ahead and, and raise your hand, and we'll work down the list. So Ms. Cohen, go ahead and kick us off, please. Thank you.
Sorry, just trying to get my video up. You know, I think, of course, after listening to not only the testimony last night, but in all of the conversations and emails that we continue to get with the community, I think both, obviously, from staff members, but from the community at large, is a real desire to figure out some way to recognize what our staff has been doing in these times. So I, I'd love to hear either some further ideas, drill down a little more what you were talking about with the ESR-2, that we have to figure out a way to tie it to COVID. But also, just asking more generally, when we're, when will we know about the potential for teacher raises? You know, I, we keep hearing that the transfer from the state is, is going to be much better than we projected. So what's the timeframe for us getting to know where we are here?
Can I, can I just interject, Ms. Cohen? It's not going to be before February 18th, right, Ms. Burden?
Correct. The county executive releases his budget on February 23rd. And the state is also, I think they're mid-February, but...
But so, yeah, I mean, but so my point is, we need to make the decisions we have now based on what we know now. So I just really want to encourage us, you know, what do other colleagues think about it? Or, you know, is this like a strong number one thing for you, Ms. Cohen? Are there other things? What we have in front of us is all that we have. There's...
Well, sure. No, I mean, Dr. Braybrand had committed last time to looking at ESR and where it could potentially apply to some of our operations and being able to pull money out then in a different direction for compensation. So I was curious about getting a response for that. And yes, it's a, it's a priority. It's not the number one priority. The number one priority, I think, has got to be addressing learning loss, but I think this goes hand in hand with that.
So if I can, Ms. Cohen, I will say, the one nugget we found out that you heard is, we can't use ESR to be the local match, right? We can't use ESR to be the local match and then get the state $7 million. If we're trying to do a bonus, we'd have to vary, again, you can't call it a bonus. It's got to be specifically related to COVID. It's got to be narrowly tailored. And many of our staff, our staff wants compensation, but I would also say our staff, if, if possible, would rather see a reoccurring opportunity instead of just a one-time cash payment. So I, I think we, we really are eager to see what the state and the locality ultimately do. They have their own demands about compensation, both locally from the Fairfax County government employees and also from state employees. And I think we'll be better, we'll be in a better position to know how fully we can bring you a compensation piece to this budget later on in the budget process. It's, it's just premature to know. And, and ultimately, if the funding levels do not engage, how much would the board want to reprioritize or even cut on things that we've already funded to achieve unfunded priorities like compensation? And that's a very difficult decision to make. I just don't think we have all the variables yet to give the board a fair balance or the, or the public a fair balance of all the pieces yet we would have to review before making that decision.
What, what you referenced, the county, I've heard that the county is going to be working on some sort of compensation deal for their employees. What are you hearing on that?
I have not heard that. I have not heard that. I can certainly ask the county executive about it on Monday. I have not heard an overall compensation approach to the county, but that doesn't mean that it, it, it could be under development. I mean, a lot of things have been moving quickly. The county brought at the joint meeting their forecast, which had revenue growth very low. And we need to see what those growth forecasts are in the county executive's budget. So, like Ms. Burden said, the, our two biggest funding sources have yet to speak. And I think depending on how those come in, gives us how much flexibility we have in either trying to use ESR for one time, or are there ways that we can reprioritize and find some way to do compensation, permanent compensation, reoccurring compensation for our staff?
Well, and I think last time you had committed, as I mentioned, to going back and doing a crosswalk of where, where could ESR dollars be used then to supplement operational, you know, other operational items, and then take that savings and put it into some form of teacher compensation? Is that still on the table?
That is something where we are still looking at, and as Ms. Burden said, it's, it's just been such a short, extremely short amount of time. We are running through, look, starting to look at that kind of thing, yes. What, where could we really substitute one-time money? But we don't have it finished in a form for the board to review today.
Okay. I mean, I, you know, I know I'm one of 12, but I, this is a high priority. I do, I have heard that the county is working through the, you know, through conversations with other county employees on compensation. So I think coming back to the board with that information would be super helpful. And, you know, more than a pat on the back is what we have got to figure out a way to do this year, in my opinion.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mulberg, can you please indicate if the time runs out for staff while they're speaking, please? I wasn't quite sure if that was Mr. Cohen or Dr. Braybrand. I'd appreciate that help. Thank you. Or Ms. Medea. Okay, next, we have Ms. Karen Corbett Sanders, followed by Ms. Karen Kees-Gamora.
Well, I am glad to follow my colleague Ms. Cohen, because I too am concerned about the compensation piece. I have heard, I've seen on Facebook, that there are discussions as to a bonus opportunity at a minimum for our county employees. My concern is that with the increasing healthcare cost, we know that our teachers and staff actually received less in their, in their paychecks that are arriving in their bank accounts this week than they did a month ago. And so we need to find a way of recognizing the excellent hard work that our staff at all levels have contributed. So I would be, I will join you in advocating for that, Ms. Cohen. But I want to start with, we are required to provide a needs-based budget to the county. This budget is in line with what we know the county is willing to offer. But it isn't, does not necessarily reflect the true needs. And so I, for one board member, want to see our budget request submitted, which will also show where we're getting various dollars from. But that budget request needs to show the priorities for this board in compensation, in the most important piece, which is addressing learning loss and remediation for our students. I had the pleasure of reviewing some grading yesterday, and I do think that it is critical that we create those opportunities for our students, both during the summer, as well as perhaps additional programming next year during the school year. And so we need to present a budget that reflects that. And similarly, we have to reflect a budget that reflects many of the priorities supporting our exceptional students with disabilities. So that's where I think I would like to have our conversation amongst board members, is where they're at on those priorities. And perhaps, Ms. Marin, if you want to keep a list of the priorities, and then we can actually go through them, that would be very helpful. Does anybody want to comment on that? Dr. Braybrand?
Well, Ms. Corbett Sanders, as, as far as compensation, this is an unfunded priority. We've identified it. If the board wants to, we've just shared earlier, if the board wants to add that in, that would increase the county transfer request. And we can do that, if that's what the board desires, if...
I will be asking for this board to make such a suggestion then, if my colleague Ms. Cohen doesn't do it first. Because as I mentioned, this is really, this is our ask. This is not our get. And the ask has to reflect the priorities of this board and what we need. And the compensation for our employees, remember, I mean, you know this better than anyone, Dr. Braybrand, 93% of our funding is associated with employees, employee compensation. And so we do need to find a way of continuously supporting it, especially in light, especially in light of the national teacher shortage. We cannot afford to be in the situation we were in several years ago, where we couldn't attract people. Thank you.
Understood.
Thank you. I think, again, in the terms of moving our conversation further, it's really helpful to identify these recurring themes and identifying priorities. So I'm eager to capture that down as we talk to each other. Kees-Gamora, followed by Ms. Omeche?
Thank you. Just trying to get my camera on. So I want to start by trying to answer the question that Ms. Burden presented to us. And one of those questions was, sorry, the camera didn't come on for some reason, was, as our guiding principle, does this budget reflect our priorities? And I'm going to say, I am one board member who's struggling to be able to answer that question, because some of my significant concerns and those that have been, we've heard from our community, aren't really answered. And I agree with Ms. Corbett Sanders, even if we don't think we have the funding, we must identify the need. So those guiding principles for me, in addition to what's already been stated, which I support, is I do believe that we have to be much more specific regarding student success in light of where we are coming out of a pandemic, or trying to come out of a pandemic. As I look at the funding that has been designated for student success, which we discussed last week, and I continue to advocate that we have greater discussion, because we have no greater duty as a board than to address the needs of student success. And particularly with respect to where we are. I see 4.5 million, a couple of other things with respect to computers dealing with that. All of those things are deemed part of student success. But I don't see the specific items with respect to how we're going to climb out. Now, I think I've heard that some of that is going to be discussed, but I, I want to point out, I can't answer the question regarding this budget without understanding how we're going to climb out of where we are. So I'll stop there for a moment, just in case anybody wants to comment.
Well, Ms. Kees-Gamora, I'd quickly just say, I do think Dr. Presidio's presentation later today will help answer a lot of what our plan is around the extended learning opportunities for students. It may not be all of it, but I think it will answer many things, and we look forward to sharing that with you today. We are looking, I will say to the board, the total of that could be upwards of $30 million or more, and we're looking at ESR funds to do much of that work. So I do want to just say those two things right out of the gate. So I'm not bringing you a pipe dream today that we can't fund for this coming spring and summer. We can use ESR money for this. It's one of the new areas. And we are absolutely going to devote a significant amount of our ESR dollars toward what Dr. Presidio would be sharing with you. So we'll share that at the appropriate time, and then get your office feedback.
So I did read the presentation. I didn't see anything, which is part of the reason that I'm raising this question. The next thing that I would say is of significant concern, has to do with our ELL students. And, and we know that there have been a number of groups that have been particularly hit hard. I know that there is some funding in this budget to address that. But I also know that with the governor's budget and our inability to identify these students because of the pandemic, we, our numbers may be really off. So I just really want to make sure that as we're identifying the needs of this particular constituency, that we are basing that on what... that we are basing that on what the true need is, as opposed to what we think we can get. So, Dr. Brabran, can you address that and how we might be impacted by the governor's budget?
Sure. Dr. Presidio, I know, I know you've been working particularly around English language learner staffing and the governor's budget, and I think you've maybe even started to share with some board members some of that information. Would you, would you feel comfortable making some comments to Ms. Kees-Gamara on this issue?
Sure, and, and we appreciate you raising this question, because it is incredibly, incredibly important. And I did just actually, a second ago, send an email, so I apologize tonight, getting back to you sooner on that. But we have been working and advocating with the State Department of Education to use what's referred to as presumptive L status, that allow, even when we haven't completed a language assessment, to include those students in our funding count for ESOL services. And the governor's been working with the State Department of Education and released a superintendent's memo that is allowing districts that flexibility. So we do anticipate stable levels of funding with respect to our ESOL student counts. And we've also been working really hard to get those students, those new English language learners, actually. We've been doing that through our central sites and our, out of the 6,500 students, we've currently provided assessments to 5,000. So we're making good progress on that. But it doesn't matter, because the funding levels will remain stable based on that superintendent's memo that was recently released.
All right, thank you. Um, I look forward to flushing that out a little bit. I'm sorry, the phone started ringing, I wasn't able to hear everything. But it does sound like you're addressing that. As we go forward, in the need, need for transparency, I also would like to make sure we're addressing how we're COVID funds specifically. And I, I will need to go back.
Sure, Ms. Kees-Gamara, that was a very soundful turn you had there. Sure thing. So we have Ms. Omeish, followed by Dr. Anderson.
Yeah, and Ms. Maron, I just want to clarify in terms of process for how you've set us up here today. We are using this portion for board discussion, right? So talking to one another?
Yeah, so can I just share, colleagues, I mean, that was the vision that the committee had put together. And, you know, I'm trying to understand now, you know, I'm certainly very close to it, so I might know some of this information. And so I'm trying to figure out, you know, you know, how much to try and forward us to discussion, or even like, if we don't all speak for three minutes, perhaps we can have more go-arounds with shorter time. It's really up to you all. I'm trying my best, I don't know if I want to propose a motion to say, should we change the timing structure? So that was the intent, to try and get us to deliberate, but obviously people have questions. So I guess if we could just continue to, you know, be mindful about that, we'll go from there. So I hope that's helpful.
Yeah, thanks. Just want to know how to use my time. There are a couple of things, colleagues, that give me anxiety, just walking into this and even seeing the presentation and where we're headed. Not because I don't think, you know, that there's hard work being done. But, for example, and, and a number of community members raised some good questions yesterday as well. But I don't understand how this is not a radically different picture than what we typically do with a budget process, given the difference in the circumstance of, of what's gone on this year and even, or sorry, last year, with the, with the shift to virtual. I mean, the, the operational cost of something like that, I would imagine, is just radically different. So I, and then, of course, the dip of student enrollment that we're anticipating, and how we've adjusted for that, these are things that, just constantly, as we're delving deeper into the budget, I'm kind of still back here thinking, we haven't even resolved these questions. So that's one. And the, the other is related to identifying needs. And as we've said, you know, addressing learning loss, tutoring, and these kinds of things that are constantly weighing on my mind. And then I'm looking at these budget pieces, and, and we're not even addressing it in a serious way, or putting aside funds that are going to be needed for that in a way that's going to be transformative and really deeply addressing what's happening in a meaningful way. So these are just things that are constantly weighing on me, and I don't think we've resolved them. And we're going to keep moving forward through this process, we're going to find ourselves with a budget. And I don't know that we're going to, I, I, I mean, it doesn't seem to add up with, with what the anticipated needs are. The other piece is related to identifying these needs, actually. We can all sit here and have opinions about what should be funded, and maybe, you know, have pressure from the community in different directions. But there's an equity problem with that. I, I, I mean, I, I'm curious, actually, if staff could respond to the, the question of like, what the equity team came back with at some point. But, you know, I mean, we, we don't even know what all the gaps are. We're not on the ground all the time. I mean, it's our role to make sure there are, you know, not inconsistencies. And that's where I start to panic a little bit here, because I see the inconsistencies on the ground. I hear about the many fallout situations. On this side of the work, we're saying how great things are going. And so where, you know, where should the money be allocated? Because I don't trust our 12 perspectives, frankly, to know where the, the most urgent needs are. And that's part of what boggles my mind when it comes to levels of urgency, how we prioritize what we're funding, especially in a crisis, you know, where the most vulnerable pockets are. I don't know that we put our finger on that. And our equity team obviously can weigh in on that, though being, you know, very small percentage of, of our staff and the perspective that goes into this. So that's another area where I just don't think we're doing our due diligence. And I, I'm worried about how, where we end up. Which brings me to the staff equity piece. You know, I know there's this talk about staff compensation. Part of me is like, absolutely, essential workers, this has been a crisis. You know, part of me though is like, are we really talking about this? Are we in a financial crisis, or are we not? And how are our decisions reflecting that? All these are things floating in my head, I know that's my time. But I don't know that we've resolved these things, and we're still thinking about the nitty-gritty here of the budget, which, I mean, these are bigger concerns.
Thank you, Ms. Omeish. Thank you. Dr. Anderson, followed by Ms. Tolan.
Okay, thank you. Just trying to put my, my video on. I'm trying to adhere to the structure of today, but I apologize if my questions are going to overlap. I, I want to kind of pull out some of the pieces from Ms. Omeish's presentation that are very much reflective of where my concerns are. I, I want to be sure that I lay this out, so people are clear on where I am in terms of my position. Our ESSER funds, our CARES funds are a result of this pandemic. And so I think we need to be super mindful to use them for that. We have such learning loss that has taken place. For me, that's priority one. We have to have those, those plans in place to address the learning loss. In addition to that, the mental health supports that we will need to provide our students, we matriculate into our buildings. For me, those two things have to be priority one. And this is where the overlap happens, so I ask for your forgiveness, Ms. Maron. When I look at Dr. Fabio, Dr. Presidio's presentation, there for summer 2021, I saw 6.6 million for SPED, 13 for elementary. There's another amount for elementary out, for middle and high school. I don't see where that lives in our budget. And I'd like to, for that to be right off the top, because for me, that's priority one. I think that totals 25.7. And, Ms. Burden, I don't know if you could lead me as to where that shows up on our plan here? Maybe I missed it.
Yeah, we're, that's on the list of items that would be funded with ESSER II, the 84 million.
Is that 87?
Yes. Because the, you know, the, the two, I guess, main thrusts of at least the discussion about ESSER II have been about learning loss and infrastructure. So the, the, you know, 37 million from Sloan, from Dr. Presidio's summer program documents would be slated to be funded out of the ESSER II funding.
Okay, I must have missed something, because I saw 25.7 and not 30, but that's neither here nor there.
You have to add the special education to it.
Oh, it's outside of that. Ah, got it. Okay, so that makes it about 31. Something. I, I guess what I was looking for, maybe on, on slide seven, is a, a chart that shows how we are drawing down on that 84 million. I don't see numbers associated with that, because key things for us. One, the learning loss, that $31 million. So right away, we have fewer to work with, what the mental health supports will be in those costs. And of course, the mitigation, the mitigation supplies, as well as any infrastructure. I would like to see that tease that. I want to know how much is left of the $84 million for us to be creative with, once we have definitely outlined what our key needs are. So that's something that I would like to, to see, or at least have somebody speak to if possible.
Yeah, we're not, we're not, we're not there yet. I mean, we just got notification. Basically, all we have at this point is a list of, of needs that have been identified, which were the, was the last page that I presented. The, we, I mean, there's, the grant application is not due until April. We still have a good bit of CARES I funding left over that has not yet been spent. It's been allocated for specific purposes, but hasn't yet been spent. And we have to spend the ESSER I funds before we start on the ESSER II. And again, we, we will have to have a grant application prepared by April. But it's, it's, we do not have a detailed plan about how those, that 84 million will be spent right now.
But our ESSER I funds have all been allocated, because we did that since the summer.
Yes, they have all been allocated, but, you know, we're not, we're not back at school. So, for example, we allocated nearly 5 million for hourly intervention support in the form of hourly teacher salaries. Most of that has not been spent. I think there's 4.8 million that has not been spent yet, because we're not back at school. There's also about 3 million in compensatory services, remediation and recovery. And only a couple of hundred thousand of that has been spent thus far as well. And Dr. Brabran asked me to write up a, a status of the CARES I funding, and that'll come out in the Brabran briefing on Friday.
Okay, thank you. That was, I want to be my next question. And I don't want to kind of, to, to push you ahead of schedule, since some things are not ready. But I, I, I think in terms of this discussion, I personally am one person who needs to see those numbers and to see how we're drawing down from that, from that 84, because it looks like, it sounds like a lot, because 84 million is a lot. But when we have these big-ticket items that are $31 million just for learning loss, we, we need to start to draw down from those funds to see what else is there for us to, sorry, what else is there for us to, to continue to have some other discussions on? I'll go ahead and be placed on a go-back. Thank you.
Sure, Dr. Anderson, thank you. I also just want to point out, colleagues, that on the board docs for today's, if you scroll down, there is a document that was placed recently of the SCPS Student Support Actions Update. And that lists things that have been done and planned or proposed to be done for board consideration as well on addressing learning loss. So do take a look at that. And again, we'll talk more about that, but that document is much more comprehensive than what we're going to hear a little bit later. Okay, next, we have Ms. Tolan, followed by Ms. McLaughlin.
Yes, thank you. I guess what I'm struggling with most, you know, and listening to, to some of our, you know, people in the community last night, just looking at budget and listening to the conversation, I mean, even just the, the last conversation where Ms. Burden is talking about, we've spent less money here because we haven't been in school than we maybe would have planned. I mean, isn't the big elephant in the room here? Like, where are we headed? We have a proposed schedule for returning to school in a hybrid model. The budget that we're talking about here is, you know, into next year. Are we looking to, I know, are we thinking we're still going to be in a hybrid model if students aren't vaccinated? Are we really trying to get our students into school, you know, more? You know, are we aiming for, you know, five days a week to see our students? You know, I think a lot of the learning loss that we're talking about is really due to the fact that, you know, we haven't been in school. So is, you know, what's the underlying assumption in the numbers that we're looking at here, moving forward? You know, if, if the numbers are different, depending on these different situations, you know, virtual, hybrid, five days in school, then what are we aiming for? And what are we budgeting for? So I don't know, Dr. Brabran, if you have any comments along those lines?
Sure, sure. Thank you, Ms. Tolan. Our aspiration is to return to five days a week of in-person instruction for all of our students in the fall. That's absolutely the aspiration in our budget. We've set up registration of courses with that intent. It's our aspiration. As you know, there are many variables that we're all experiencing right now in the pandemic. But that is absolutely what we want to do. And I think it's the challenge, the ESSER II money just dropped, and today, in a few minutes or another hour, of that 84 million, we've got about 32, 31 to 36 million spoken for already for extended learning loss. And this is just in a few weeks of work. So we've almost got half of it spent towards ESSER II. We need to look at facilities, we need to look at a few other issues that have been brought up, additional remediation and intervention. And I just want to make, make you all maybe a little bit of just how complicated it is. It seems simple, but it's not. We've given schools intervention dollars, and schools have been able to use it from the beginning. Many schools are leveraging it with intervention plans that have already started this week. Remember, we have in-person intervention starting. They haven't spent a lot of it in the fall, because they really wanted the in-person opportunity to more accelerate those gaps. And we're going to have that opportunity. I, I believe we will be having that opportunity as the board supports the return to school timeline I shared with you last week. In February, in March, in April, and May, we'll have a chance to do interventions at much more accelerated and deeper levels in these months coming ahead. So we do aspire for five days in person for the fall. That's what this budget aspires to have happen. We've already got learning that we're looking at for the spring, for the summer. We still need to do, as you said, we need to look at learning for next year, and what additional interventions, social, emotional, and academic will we need? And we're still working through some of that. So this is a budget right now that is working to identify the opportunity for additional compensation and additional student learning opportunities in the spring, in the summer, and into next year. We've identified a lot for the spring and summer. We're still working on some of next year. And we think the ESSER funds will really be able to help us, particularly with that student piece. We're still finishing some of the facility pieces as well, and we'll have some updates. But again, two big variables, as, as Ms. Corbett Sanders mentioned in our budget, are the county and the state. That's still being developed, and that's going to help us in just a few more weeks be able to have an even more.
Your time's up. Okay, I appreciate that. But I do, you know, really understand that there will be differences in transportation costs, facilities costs, et cetera. So I want to make sure that those are really reflected here, if that is, you know, the five-day-a-week program that we're looking at for the fall. Just a couple of other things I noted, and we'll hear more from Dr. Presidio. The, you know, the approximately 30 million that we're talking about deals with, just added up the number of students. It's like 43, you know, 1,200 of our students. You know, I really want to make sure, you know, and I guess that's, you know, as you've mentioned, you've been working on this for a couple of weeks as we move forward. You know, what about the other 150,000 students? You know, what kinds of things will we have in place for them as well as we move into this, this summer and the fall, dealing with learning losses? I definitely support, you know, looking, using some of the ESSER money on the maintenance side and looking at some of these HVAC upgrades. Definitely behind that, that helps us meet a number of our goals, just safety in our schools around the virus, energy efficiency, et cetera. So definitely support that area. I also wanted to mention again that, you know, with our membership numbers being as uncertain as they are, and moving into the fall, as we change, you know, what we're doing, we're going to see, you know, changes. You know, support for Jessica DeGillis's office to really analyze those numbers and see capacity moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tolan. I just wanted to actually ask my vice chair, Ms. Farina Kofax, to chime in, because, you know, she's been through this process before, she's been budget chair before. And I know in my efforts to try and streamline us, I don't, I'm hearing frustration from some staff members about wanting to know more, excuse me, board members, about wanting to know more about the proposed recovery activities and learning loss. excuse me, board members about wanting to know more about the proposed recovery activities and learning loss, you know, recovery activities. Because we didn't budget time today to go over all that in detail. And, you know, my understanding is we want to focus on the proposed. What I hear is that's missing. So if that's true, then it sounds like from what Miss Burden said, we have to do the work to have amendments. So, Ms. Verona Kofax, can you jump in and perhaps try and clarify? If you're on, I see now your signal might be a little weak, so I hope you're there.
No, I'm here.
Yeah, do you get what I'm saying, Ms. Verona Kofax?
I I would like some clarification on what you want me to answer.
On what's a clarify? I just feel, you know, we had proposed with this work session to put on the proposed budget and that and board dialogue. What I'm hearing from some board members is they want to know more about where are the proposals about the recovery and learning loss efforts? And getting budget time just to talk about that. And so what I'm wondering is, well, is that in essence the product of this discussion is people saying, hey, there's a big thing missing, and we need to work on that in amendments? A way that we should be discussing this? I'm wondering if you have some input in council.
Well, yeah, I mean, and I, as as you know, I missed Monday's meeting for our budget plan, budget planning session because I was at the legislative, V S B's legislative briefing. So I think any questions right now that the staff can answer on that, and maybe even if you want to, I know it it sounds like it was your intent and 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 staff had agreed to wait for the presentation, but maybe more information would be helpful because there are lots of questions. As Dr. Brabran said, it's a very complex budget because we have big, big chunks missing right now. We have, we have, you know, we all are concerned about compensation. We all are concerned about learning loss. Those are big, two big themes we're seeing here. And we're not sure how to answer that, and we're and board members are hearing, I need amendments. So there are other times where board members can propose that. I think that's that's important to note. But it is important to note that right now, as some colleagues mentioned, that this is the needs-based budget, and that's what we have to present to our our county partners. So any, I I would take the opportunity for staff to give us any information because there appears to be lots of questions right now. And if you even wanted to bump up the other part of the presentation, I might suggest that, so.
Okay, sure. Thank you. No, let's go ahead and do that. And so, you know, we're trying something different. It didn't quite work. Let's, and I know, Ms. Burden, you were ready to give the next part. So why don't we just, I'll hold the list where we're at. So that would be with Ms. McLaughlin next, followed by Mr. Frisch. And then I have Ms. Bukarski. If you've already spoken, I do have you down for a second turn. You can go ahead, Ms. Corbett Sanders. I see you had your hand for, I have Ms. Karen Keisgumara, Ms. Dr. Anderson, Ms. Corbett Sanders. So, yes, and then I've got, hold on a second. What did I just say? We had Ms. Bukarski. All right, okay, so.
I believe Ms. Tolan had a go back as well, Ms. Marin.
Thanks, Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Ms. Marin, this is the size more heiser. I have my hand up to speak. I've not had my first round yet.
Gotcha. Thank you. Thanks. Thanks for being flexible, folks. So.
Ms. Marin, I'd like to be recognized about a process question.
Sure.
I I don't understand what's happened here between your conversation.
Let me finish explaining. Let me finish explaining. I asked Ms. Verona Kofax to weigh in because we had discussed a different approach today to try and really focus on what's been proposed. But it sounds like there's so many questions about what is going to be related to learning recovery. And we had bifurcated that presentation. But since I'm getting so many questions from members about it, it seems like it'd be best just to allow staff to present that information and then return back with you, Ms. McLaughlin, being the next speaker up after that. So. All right. So can we go ahead and invite Ms. Burden back?
Actually, Dr. Presidio is doing the next section.
Great, thank you. Okay. I think what what changed is that when I recognized this document of twelve pages of the proposed ideas for learning loss and a capture of what had been done, that kind of tipped the scale of folks being okay to wait to folks wanting to know now what was happening. So that is what happened in real time, and we're just adjusting. So thank you, Dr. Presidio.
All right. Well, thank you, Ms. Marin, and to all the board members. Thank you for your patience and your flexibility on this. We definitely appreciate it. And if our clerks could pull up the presentation, there's a few slides that we want to share with respect to what we're looking at planning right now with respect to extended learning. But I I do, before we dig into this, I just want to say briefly that, you know, we have just finished second semester. We do know that there are profound impacts, both academically and social, emotional impacts on our students as a result of the COVID school closures and distance learning. We're still collecting more data, still analyzing that, and still really trying to figure out, you know, can we better identify? And Ms. Omech has asked some questions today about this. You know, can we better identify the student populations that have been impacted the most? So we do know that our special education students, our English language learners have had some of the most significant impacts. We also know that some of our earliest learners, pre-K students, preschool students, as well as kindergarten students, we've seen our enrollment numbers really decline at those early learning grade levels. But we're continuing to gather more data and really understand the impact. You know, we're looking at kind of those contextual factors and the inner, in kind of the intersection of, you know, families backgrounds, poverty, economic status, as well as access to health care and health services. And, you know, how those contextual factors are are really intersecting and impacting some of our communities in Fairfax the greatest to really inform all of our extended learning supports and services. And we did put together the document that Ms. Marin mentioned. It's about a twelve-page document posted on board docs. And it goes through and provides information on support services that have been provided previously up until this time. So it goes all the way back to last school year, last summer's extended learning programs, things that we've done during quarter one and quarter two. As Ms. Burden mentioned and Dr. Brabran mentioned, schools do have funds to be providing intervention services now. And they are doing that in person beginning this week. So we do believe that, you know, with the additional in-person learning opportunities that we hope to see here very soon, that we'll be able to address a lot of the longer-term issues and needs that students might have and to try to be able to mitigate those as much as possible before summer and before school year. But we do know that we're going to have significant needs in the summer and beyond, and that's what these slides represent. So the first slide here is programs with respect to serving special education students. And there's two different programs here. One is our extended school year program, and that's a program that we typically offer every summer. And it provides an opportunity for students with I E P services to continue to make gains during the extended learning time in the summer, or students that might, we might have concerns about summer slide issues and regression during the summer that we identify that we need to serve. So you see that, you know, this program, we anticipate that this program will be an in-person program. There might be some virtual components, but again, aiming for in-person nineteen days and serving about four thousand students. And you see that there's not a lot of cost associated here. That's because most of this program will be funded using existing I D E A funds. The second program, Recovery Services, is a new program for students pre-K twelve. And here you can see that this program also will be in person with some possible virtual components. And again, that's going to depend on the health conditions at the time. But this program is a longer program. We've scheduled thirty-three days, basically of five days a week of services. And it will be based on, the duration will be based on, on the I E P needs determination for individual students accessing this program. Students will probably implement or access this program during the summer and likely during school year twenty-one, twenty-two as well. Also, students might participate in both of these programs. They might attend E S Y, and they might receive some recovery services as well. Based on our preliminary data, we're looking at about six thousand students that we need to provide recovery services to at a new cost of about six point six million dollars. And again, that's part of our proposed budget here expenditures under S R two. The next program for extended learning is looking at what we would do during the summer for elementary students. So the first program is a bridge-to-K program. Again, this would be an in-person program, fifteen days long. We would offer it in all of our schools, and it would support students that have not had an opportunity to participate in preschool prior to enrolling in kindergarten. We anticipate about two thousand students need to be served in this program. That's about double what we would typically serve in a normal year. And you see the estimated cost of one point five million. A new program that we'd like to implement is Bridge to First Grade. And basically, this would be similar to the Bridge to Kindergarten in the philosophy that we have some students that likely will not have had any in-person learning before they start first grade. So families that are choosing to remain virtual for the remainder of the year, those students will have had no in-person learning opportunities, and other students will have had limited in-person learning opportunities. So we want to make sure that those students at the early grade levels, as they enter first grade next year, have the opportunity for some additional in-person supports. Again, targeting about two thousand students at a cost of about one point five million dollars. The third program that we think is critical is our Young Scholars Program. And we would offer this program in all of our elementary schools that are supporting young scholars with identified students. Again, an in-person program, fifteen days. And really, this program is focused on acceleration and enrichment, particularly in the areas of math and science. We've got a great partnership with our T J students, who are student ambassadors that work with our Young Scholars students. And we'd be very excited to be able to offer this expanded Young Scholars Program to about twice as many students as have previously been able to access it. And then the last program is our largest program that we're proposing. This would be grades K through six for supporting students in math and literacy acceleration. Again, in person, offered in every one of our elementary school for fifteen days. And again, the focus would be on strengthening and accelerating students' computational skills as well as early, as well as their literacy skills and language arts. So we're estimating about twelve thousand students here at a cost of eight point seven million dollars. At the middle school level, we have three key programs. The first is Young Scholars. So this would be similar to what we do in the Elementary Young Scholars Program. Here, because we have a fewer number of students in middle school, we estimate we'd need about seven hundred students who would need to be served cost of about four hundred thousand dollars. Similar to elementary, we want to provide support services to students in all of our schools, all of our middle schools in math and literacy acceleration. And we think we would, based on current data, need to serve about thirty-two hundred students at a cost of about two million dollars. And then also, we would like to implement an online English language development program that would support our English learners in really strengthening their English language skills, particularly their reading and writing skills in English. And again, we would anticipate we'd need about a thousand seats for that. And this, we don't believe we need additional funding for because it can be funded out of a Title III grant. And we've provided similar programming in in past years using Title III budgets. And then lastly is our high school program. The biggest program would be our credit recovery program, an in-person program offered in each of our high schools. We would like to run two sessions at fifteen days per session, and students would have an opportunity to recover credit in courses that they might not have passed at the end of the school year. Now, you'll remember that we're working on some grading flexibility for students so that they might be able to end the school year with a no mark or a no pass in a class instead of a failure. And this would allow them to attend the summer program and earn full credit and earn a a letter grade in those courses that they were struggling with at the end of this particular school year. So this is a large program that we're anticipating, based on quarter one data, of about eleven thousand students who might need this program. That that's up significantly from what we would offer in a typical year to about fifteen hundred students. So a large expansion here, a large cost of about ten million dollars. But we feel, based on our initial grade data from quarter one, that we'll have a large number of students who would need access this type of program and service. Also is our online campus program. And we believe that we're going to have some increased interest in online campus as well. This gives students the opportunity to earn original credit. So take a class during the summer that they haven't taken previously, which then allows them more flexibility in their schedule the following school year. So we don't need additional funds here. This is a tuition-based program, but we have reduced our tuition costs so that our tuition is in alignment with other competitors like Virtual Virginia. And we offer a great product with a lot more teacher support than other products. And then finally is the online English language development at the high school as well, serving students in English language proficiency levels one through four, similar to what we are planning for middle school. And again, anticipating about a thousand students and paying for that with Title III funds. So when you add all that together, the elementary, the middle, and the high school programming adds up to an estimated budget need right now of twenty-five point seven million dollars. Additionally, we would need six point six million dollars to support our special education programming that we outline. And that together is about thirty-two million dollars that we would need to reserve in the S R two funds to be able to provide these support services. Now, these are just estimates, still in draft form. We hope that the numbers of students who need services will go down by the time we get to the summer. But we need a plan for what the possible need will be, and we think we've been able to do that here. Also, we're working on developing additional plans for supports for next school year, interventions, tutoring services, extended learning opportunities for next school year. We've not costed that out entirely yet, but we're recommending that the board preserve at least five million dollars, similar to what we did this year, for those support services for next school year. So that's just a quick overview. Again, a lot more detail in that document that's posted online. But hopefully, that might help with some of the questions that board members have, and I'm happy to go into more detail as well. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. So now we will resume with our speakers list. So we've got Ms. McLaughlin next, followed by Mr. Frisch. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to return to the budget at hand. I I'm going to start at the macro level. Dr. Brabran, as Ms. Corbett Sanders noted, you know, our our operating budget annually is almost eighty-eight to ninety percent employee compensation. So can you please share with us? How is it that you and the county executive have not had the conversation about what to do with employee compensation so that employees aren't working next year for less money than they do this year due to healthcare cost increases? And how is it that when we talk about one Fairfax, then what we need to be doing is having a data-driven conversation of what is the revenue that's expected to come into the county? How can we tell our employees, both on the county side and the school side, that we're doing everything we can to do what's right by them for the the premier workforce in light of revenue? What's happening in the Washington, D.C. metro area for raises? There's just such a lack of data driving this conversation. And so last night, the board heard from our greatly concerned employees, and I'm troubled that we don't have essential facts and data to help drive board discussion and therefore help our employees understand that we're making data-informed decisions to what Ms. Omech said. I want her to trust my opinion on the budget, but I need you to bring the data and the facts. So where are we on the data for raises in the metro area, in the county? And how can there have been no conversation on this?
Well, for now, we don't have any definite information about the other divisions. Only Loudon County Public School budget has been released. The other divisions around us, Arlington, Alexandria, Prince William, their budgets aren't out yet. And so even though, you know, we've had informal conversations and believe that they have plans to include salary increases, no doubt, because the state is is funding. And apparently, they are going to have additional local funds. We don't know that for sure and won't know that until their budgets are released, which will be in February. So at this point, all we know about is Loudon. So at this point, all we know about is Loudon. And Loudon's budget says that they're providing step increases and a 3.5% market scale adjustment. Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead. Thank you, Ms. Burden. We also, Ms. McLaughlin, we're committed to data-driven decision-making, which you are always good about reminding us. We only have limited data from other systems. We have met regularly with the county executive. In fact, we met with board leadership and the chairman of the board and the county executive just a few weeks ago, January 14th, to be precise. We talked about compensation. I have no information that the county is in a position to provide its folks compensation. Again, we'll continue to, we'll know when the county executive releases his budget. We know that we have compensation challenges. We've been clear, we shared that in this budget presentation. And we made it clear to the county executive and chair of the board supervisors. So again, what you all saw was the last data that we saw at the joint meeting, the revenue growth is very low at 0.5%. Are those assumptions going to be changed? And I think this is one of the challenges for everybody right now wants all of the answers. We're in the middle of a pandemic that's unraveled lots of assumptions. Revenue growth assumptions, expenses. You know, as Sloan said, we doubled in some places. We've quintupled the amount, five times more prediction for credit recovery for high school. But we're really going to know more when those kids walk through the door and come away from their screen how deep the academic, social, emotional challenges are going to be. So that's the challenge. We're all trying to do our best collective thinking. And we know compensation's important. I believe if the county is going to have funds to provide compensation for its team, they're going to need to provide compensation for schools as well. I just don't know whether they have those revenues or not. That's my best answer. And when we have that more confirmed data, we definitely will share it with you and the rest of the board.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand. In the limited time I have, I want my colleagues to understand two things. One, I think it's absolutely imperative that we will have, need to have another budget work session before we vote on February 18th. Today's January 27th. There's no reason we cannot come together again on one of the most important decisions we make. And there's a lot of information that we're going to need before we vote on February 18th. The week of February 8th, certainly, I checked on our calendar we can do. This afternoon, we're talking about our anti-racism policy. It's important. But why we're doing that now, when we could be doing that after we vote on our proposed budget and we wait two more months on the county transfer, I think is something that I wish we considered as a board. So at this point, what I'm very concerned about is that this board needs the data. The other school divisions have proposed budgets from their superintendents, just like we do. So to what Ms. Burden said, this board needs to know what has been proposed by those superintendents, what those informal conversations have been all around employee compensation. And at minimum, I would recommend we have a follow-on motion that says we want a raise for our employees to match whatever the county determines they may be able to provide coming with the April transfer funds. So I look forward to a go-back. And Ms. Burden, I would like you to answer what informal conversations or what's in those proposed budgets of the Northern Virginia school divisions with respect to employee compensation. They have proposed budgets released already, correct?
Ms. Burden, would you like to respond, please? But Ms. Burden, we can't hear you.
I'm frozen.
We did just there for a moment. Are you asleep?
I'm having a tech problem.
We can hear you now, though. Your video is not up, but we can hear you.
Okay, yeah, to my knowledge, only Loudon County Public Schools has its budget out on the street. And as far as other conversations, you know, I'm not comfortable talking about those because there've not been any discussions I've had firsthand. I've got information from other people within the organization that have talked to people in other divisions. So I'm getting the information secondhand and would prefer to wait until their budgets are actually out on the street to provide a response to that.
I appreciate that, Ms. Burden. So again, I do think that we need another work session before February 18th. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Next, we have Mr. Fresh, followed by Ms. Sizmar Heizer.
Thank you. I want to echo the comments of Ms. Omech and some of my other colleagues who have talked about the need for identifying needs that we would like to fund if the money were available to us. I don't think we need to have a fully-formed alternate budget of like a wish list kind of thing. But there are some things that I believe we have consensus on, at least emerging from this conversation. And I think we should, you know, cost that out and include that in our deliberations and our work with the board. You know, chief among those are the long-term learning loss mitigation strategies that we have, not just laid out here, but beyond that first year back. What is the strategy for mitigating learning loss going forward? COVID is not going to be a one-year-and-we're-done scenario of dealing with the fallout. So I think we need to begin the conversation around what more we might expect to need in the future. Also, on teacher and instructional staff pay, this is something that I've been talking about since our first budget conversation. Question on that front, there was more clarity around what COVID relief funds can be used for on this front. Specifically, I believe it was stated that a bonus would have to be related to COVID. Can someone define for me what would be related to COVID? What would fall into that category?
I'm still having trouble with audio. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, it says I'm mute, but I'm not, apparently.
Nobody can shut you up. Fantastic.
Gee, thanks.
No, I meant as a compliment.
No, I'm teasing. Yeah, I mean, it has to be like for frontline workers, teachers, you know, employees whose jobs have changed as a result of the pandemic. It can't be just like a bonus. It can't be characterized as anything like a bonus. It cannot be a salary increase. It can only be additional pay for work that is associated with the pandemic.
Okay, so broadly speaking, that could, you know, virtually, everybody's job has changed as a result of the pandemic, right?
Yeah, I would emphatically agree with that.
So I would, you know, put that out there, that as we have these conversations, it seems pretty clear that there would be the availability of some of these funds to, you know, do right by our staff. In terms of, you know, I, there are other things that I think we should be including when we have our conversations around priorities that we would fund if the funds were available. In previous budgets, pre-COVID, we'd had significant conversations around paying our support personnel, you know, our IAs, custodians, cafeteria workers, bus drivers, et cetera, a wage, a living wage. We've made progress on our instructional assistance. But I think there's probably agreement on the board that if the funds were available, we'd like to continue that work. So I think including that in any discussion of funds that if available, we would prioritize. I think that's an important place to start as well. And I will leave it at that and ask for a go-back.
Thank you, Mr. Fresh. Okay, next, we have Ms. Pekarsky and then Ms. Darnett Kopec. If you'd like to take a turn, you are next. After, sorry. Ms. Sizmar Heizer next, followed by Ms. Pekarsky. Let's just keep that order, please. Thank you.
I'm sorry, a little confused. Should I go or is Ms. Pekarsky going? I'm finding it a little bit.
Ms. Sizmar Heizer and then Pekarsky. Thank you.
Thank you. I wanted to sort of follow up a little bit on the employee compensation. I hear that theme. Is there a way? I know there's, I'm concerned if our other jurisdictions around us, as it's Loudon so far, are, you know, giving step increases and other increases. Is there a way to break it out? Even if we can't give a full step increase, can we at least give some level of an increase that will at least make them whole so they're not getting less than their paycheck due to higher healthcare costs? So I don't know if that's even something to look at, if we've looked at that or not. But that's something I'd like to posit, is that how can we give some increase in addition to the bonus? And if we did an increase, that's not the bonus or however the care is funding or SRR funding is used, can that be eligible for the state match? So I don't know if there's something that we could address right now of looking at a smaller increase, but at least making them whole if we can't afford the larger increase, which I'd like to look at as well.
Yeah, we can cost that out. But it's the funding source that is going to determine whether we're eligible for state funding. The state funding requires a local match and federal SR2 funds won't meet that requirement. Additionally, you know, the cost increases or premium increases of healthcare, I believe, vary based on the plan that one chose, the, you know, the level of service, whether it's employee-only, family, those sorts of things. And so that's a pretty, you know, specific amount of change in their paycheck. So you probably wouldn't be able to address that on an individual basis. You'd have to, you know, provide a certain percentage increase in order to offset that. But we could, you know, we could calculate a break-even point or, you know.
I'd just like to get some creativity in compensating our employees is what I'm trying to sort of get at, right? Like that we can use, utilize the state funding offer and being creative with it. I understand the budgetary impacts of the local match need for a step increase. And while I'd like to see at least put that out to the board of supervisors or mirror what they're doing, I agree with many of my colleagues there, if we can be more creative. So that's the first question. I appreciate that. And Dr. Presidio, I appreciate your presentation. I appreciate Ms. Omech's comments about, you know, we'd like more data really on what our needs are. I did want to put out, when I looked at the PowerPoint on the EL Recovery Services, I do think it's important to look at in-person opportunities as well and perhaps even our younger grades. I'm concerned that it seems, at least from the slide, that it's limited to just our older grades and online. Can someone address the reasoning behind that?
Yeah, thanks for pointing that out because I didn't communicate that well. At the elementary level, and this is true somewhat at the secondary level as well, a lot of the students that are going to be identified for the in-person services, the language arts and the mass services are going to be English language learners. So this is in addition to that, providing some additional virtual opportunities beyond those in-person opportunities where we've already captured those students in the in-person programs.
I guess my question, follow-on, I appreciate that clarification would be that if some of those students are English language learners, would there not be additional budgetary needs beyond what we may need for everybody else? Because we may need extra support for our English learners in addition to what, let's say, our non-English learners may need?
Well, we've built in, and this was another thing I, I should have gone a little bit more slowly, I think, in the presentation. So on the slide, you'll see like the staff that are listed that would be available. And we've included resource teachers and support staff to meet with, you know, those individual groups by English language level, special education services and the like. So those staff members are included in the staff, which largely drives, you know, the amount of funding that we need to run the program. So.
Thank you for that. I was also, in addition to staffing, was concerned about the length of time or the amount of services that, you know, because they may need more services with students who have more needs. I just wanted to put that out there. That's a budgetary impact there.
Well, I think that's a great point. That would be something for the board to consider. You know, this is our preliminary draft plan. We'd love your feedback on it. Again, we're operating within this, you know, universe of, you know, you know, fiscal restraint around the SR2 funds and what's going to be available. I will say, if you look at what we've proposed here, it's actually eight times larger investment in terms of the amount of funding that we would provide in comparison to normal years. So that'll give you a little bit of a sense of kind of the standard. It's eight times greater investment than what we've been able to make in prior years.
Great. I would just, I guess, as a follow-on question, maybe ask for some more staff information about not just the staffing levels that, you know, the staffing needed for our EL learners, but, you know, thoughts around additional times that they may need, similar to what we're looking at at ESY Recovery Services for Special Ed. You know, and some more information around that. And then I wanted to ask around Special Ed. I see it's estimated 10,000 for extended learning, you know, ESY and a recovery. But last I checked, we had some like 26,000 special education students. And that doesn't include the students with 504 plans. So this seems like a fairly small fraction of our special education students. So I'm just wondering, what are the thoughts for the other students also? And then the other question I have around Special Ed is, do we have targeted supports for executive functioning, social skills, other IUDs that may not have gotten worked on as well as maybe somewhat of a like this year? And I'll need to go back.
Yeah, and we can get you more information as well. And certainly, Dr. Boyd can follow up in more detail as well. But the big picture here is that, similar to our English language learners, our special education students will be included in the core programs that we would offer by level. So what we're anticipating here with the Recovery Services Program are the students who are going to need more in addition to what they might be able to get in a core program. So the Recovery Service Program, again, is targeting those students that we've identified and will identify with the most significant learning needs that would need to be provided in a program that provides more intensive services than what we can provide in our core program that's open to all students, whether or not they're special education or English language learners.
May I just comment on that real briefly, Ms. Maron, or can I go back? But I just have a quick sentence. Is the core programs are academic-focused? And I was talking about executive functioning skills-focused. I'll stop there. Thank you.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I didn't get to that part of your question. I apologize. So the core focus really here is on academics. We will be looking at some additional social-emotional learning supports for students. And we still need to, you know, develop our curriculum for those programs. And, you know, as Dr. Braybrand mentioned, it's going to really be based on, you know, what we're seeing when students actually do arrive in person and are with us for the next two quarters of the school year. But it will definitely contain some of those components. But large, large focus, of course, will be on academics here, since there is limited amount of time during the summer.
Yeah, and if I could, Ms. Maron, and I'm sorry, I had to step, I had technical difficulties, got back on, had to click back off. One thing, we're not spending all the SRR money. You can see the extended learning money is a little over 30-some million. We've got 84. One thing Sloan just said, Dr. Presidio said, I want to reemphasize to the board. In the next two months, as kids come back in person, we're going to have a better understanding of the full social-emotional impacts. We've been able to pull grades first quarter. The quarter just ended for second quarter on Friday. So we're going to have grade data. But the other big missing piece is that social-emotional. So we don't want to spend all of the SRR money, and we don't have to spend it through September of 2023. So some of this is, this is our best thinking now. This is an aggressive extended learning plan that we can implement this spring and summer and into the fall. And yet, we also recognize we need to be able to take real-time data as it comes in this spring, as we do our return to school, and come up with additional impacts and plans, particularly around social-emotional supports. And one final point, I know Ms. Omech earlier had talked about the equity look. I have Dr. Williams reviewing this budget for Equity Blind Spots. I shared that a couple of weeks ago. She's already presented at Cabinet. She's forming a team to look at our strategic plan with Equity, with an Equity lens, and also our budget. And anything that she comes up with between now and May, before you finally adopt this budget, I will absolutely bring to the board and make sure the board understands the full weight of her recommendations before you finally approve this budget. Thanks.
Thanks, Dr. Braybrand. And that is an important reminder that we can make budget-neutral adjustments in May. Okay, next, we have Ms. Pekarsky and then Ms. Darnett Kopec.
Thank you. And I'm happy to actually go after Rochdale because you kind of hit on my two big points. I agree with everything that's been said with compensation. big points. I, I agree with everything that's been said with compensation, obviously. But also, as, as Ms. McLaughlin said, in the context of what is happening around us. So, you know, that is, that is, I realize we don't have all that information right now, but it is going to be imperative that we take that kind of a look in this economic you know, reality. The second piece, I guess for me, you know, and thank you, I know you all have been working so hard on this remediation and meeting the vast needs of our kids, and we don't know what we're going to be dealing with. But I guess when we're, we're, you know, putting out our ask and setting our priorities, and I look at what we're being presented, really, we're looking kind of at jumpstart programs, you know, limited in number, limited number of students, limited in days. You know, I have a little bit of a concern around the online portion for our E L Ls, because I know that has just been a a, a population that has had a more difficult time connecting. So you know, all things that I know we're going to talk about as we go on, but the bottom line being kind of a more targeted need to all students. And, and what is our ask regarding that? Because we have to, you know, all our kids have been impacted in some way, not just these targeted numbers. And how is that being reflected and communicated to the community through our budget? I, I guess would be my bottom line question throughout the whole year, because this is going to be a whole year's worth of need. And if it's not somehow encapsulated in this very clearly, I do worry about that. So that, that's kind of my big takeaways of where I am right now with it.
Thank you, Ms. Bukarski. Ms. Burden, I see you have your hand up.
Uh, yeah, I did want to correct something. Although, you know, we don't usually pay as close attention to the smaller divisions in air comparisons. You know, Ms. Wiggington's done some quick research for me, and Alexandria's budget is on the street, and they are including a step plus a 1% bonus, and Falls Church City is including a step plus a half a percent M S A. And like I said, we, we normally concentrate on Arlington, Prince William, Loudoun, and Montgomery County. Arlington's budget is supposed to be out on February 25th, and Prince William's on February 3rd. And I don't know about Montgomery County, because, you know, they, they have collective bargaining and have a different process.
Thank you, Ms. Burden, for the clarification. Okay, Ms. Darnak Kofak is next, and then I'll take my turn.
Thank you. And Ms. Burden, I, I might, since you just talked about that, I was writing as quickly as I could. But if, if Ms. Wiggington and you could just put together a, a quick memo or spreadsheet on what we have, and we could update that, I think that will be helpful to all of us as we work forward and, you know, work with our funding partners at the state level as well as the local level to see, I think, because the history perspective is not favorable for Fairfax. You know, when so many years there have been surrounding jurisdictions prior to the last two years, I should say, when so many jurisdictions had been doing what we're seeing now, we're starting to see the trend, and we had not been part of that. So I don't, we are in a good position now with our surrounding jurisdictions as far as where we are competitive with our salaries, and we don't want to go below that. So I just quickly, I guess I have to obviously say I agree with the compensation issue. I think that's an emerging trend. I thank you, Dr. Presidio, for this 12-page document that I had not had the opportunity to look through. And as you've said, as Dr. Brayburn pointed out, some of that is, we, we still have additional money spent. And Dr. Brayburn, when are those monies good until the, the other S R funds?
September 2023. September 2020.
Right, so that's good. We have a nice, long time to look at, you know, the long-term effects, and we have some additional funds right now. I guess, coming from the Budget Chair's perspective, I feel like we, Melanie, you and I maybe have some work to do, or you and Dr. Anderson, making certain we are in communication. Dr. Brayburn, when is the last time you stopped, talked to Brian Hill? And I think Ms. Maron and I, or Ms. Maron and Dr. Anderson should be meeting with the county's Budget Chair to get an idea, because there is the rumblings of a talk of a bonus coming from the state as well as we're hearing that. So I think that's important to understand better and have. So I think we need to open up those communication avenues if we haven't done that yet.
Sure. We, we had, we had the meeting with the Board Chair and the County Executive and the School Board Chair and Vice Chair on January 14th.
Okay.
And then this past week, we would have gotten to budget, but something else, the, the vaccination took the, took the entire meeting, as you might understand. And we have a meeting next week as well. Again, you know, the County Executive and the, the county's budget process is about a month behind ours. So you know, we certainly can have those conversations and should, and I, I hope that the Board Leadership and Budget Chair and Vice Chair, you know, have the necessary conversations as well. They, they, let me be clear, though. I, I think they know clearly that compensation is an area that we want to be supportive of. We, you know, we, we, we do, and it's maybe clear that this board wants to do more than what I proposed in this budget to make that clear.
Okay, all right. So Ms. Maron, I, I, I'll, I'll talk to you offline about my thoughts on that and how to move forward as the, you know, the Chair of the Board of Supervisors is also the Budget Chair this year. So I, I have some thoughts on that. But as I said, I think it's important that we have communication lines open. And I have been asking a lot this week about the budget at the state level, and people have been a little coy, but you know, there's, there's rumblings that it may be okay. And I think when we look at things, I know oftentimes our employees are not thrilled with a bonus, but that maybe we need to go this year with promises in the future of, you know, a compensation that brings us back up. But we'll see, we'll see where we are. And, and as you can all tell, Board members, we have a host of quests which we're all still struggling with at this point in time, but I think we are having some consensus brought forward.
If I could, Ms. Darnak Kofaks, just to make to the board clear, whatever you decide in terms of an amendment is the board's decision. I can commit to you as Superintendent, when we have the final funding sources for the local and the state, we are going to do everything we can to bring you, because we said it was unfunded, some sort of compensation review. It may involve trade-offs. As Ms. Maron said, once we get our final numbers, we, we, we can only deal with making budget neutral adjustments. And that would be the thing. What are things that we would trade off to ensure that compensation for our employees could go forward? I, I don't have that yet, and we just don't know all the variables yet. But we clearly hear today that compensation for our staff is a top priority for this board.
Thank you. I'll go, thank you. I'll go ahead and take my turn, and then I do want to offer comments with a Budget Committee hat on. So first, for me, I, I've been approaching this budget by looking for ways that we could find some reductions in economies of scale. And I know that that's not something we can do largely, but especially when I look on the details pages that we have, page 27, it lists about over 300 that the State Department, State Board of Ed prescribes per the standards of quality. This includes 15.3 million for 152 counselors to get our ratio to 250 to 1. 100, another 15.3 million for 154 E L L staff. And then an additional 0.7 million for six psychologists, and 1.6 million for 14 social workers. An additional amount for school nurses that I guess would come out of the county's pod. But so for me, I'm thinking about, look, if this is what SOQ prescribes, and we know the best practice prescribes in a regular year, I want to at least try and see if we can get to that. So the budget questions I've been asking about, well, could we figure out savings on like per pupil allocations for textbooks and whatever else? Because that stuff already we need that we don't have. So that's where I've been focused on. I agree about teacher compensation and staff compensation. I am all for an amendment that proposes an increase, whether it's a bonus or compensation to get that state matching amount. I agree how Ms. Corbett Sanders posited it earlier. This is our needs. Our needs are that we need to cover our staff. They are working crazy hard. And it's, there is a healthcare increase, although I really will say yet again that it is unacceptable that it falls to us to deal with the private markets healthcare costs. This is why we need that to be reformed at the state level. I think that I agree. I'm very encouraged by the learning loss plan. I know that, or ideas. I know that 12-page document was just introduced to us today, but as I understand it, those services are, you know, they're going to be embedded in the staff that we provide for. So I guess it wasn't as clear like in the proposed budget that this money is for this recovery service. But we know that psychologists, social workers, more special education teachers, you know, to, to address the academic and the social emotional losses and needs. You know, to me, as I understand it, it's, it's baked in, and so maybe it isn't as apparent. But I agree with what's been said about, we need to really recognize the situation where we're aiming for having that alternative plans like Mr. Frisch suggested. I think those are all of my personal comments. And then the, as a Budget Chair, I just want to share. So I did reach out to Mr. McKay's office earlier this month, and we do have a meeting for next week on Friday for me and him. And Ms. Darnak Kofaks, I can't recall if, if I had informed you about that, or maybe Dr. Anderson, you're joining me. I'm sorry, I can't recall, but it is on the books. So we have that discussion forthcoming. But I'm going to keep talking as Budget, Budget Committee Chair. So I wanted to reflect back on the priorities that have been voiced in this first turn of go-arounds in the conversation. Teacher compensation, definitely. Addressing the learning loss, being really clear in the deliberate investments in that. And then that better planning in, you know, the situation we were in. Ms. Omeche posed, posited it as we're in a financial crisis, are we not? How is this being looked at? Ms. Tolan said, you know, what are we aiming for? Are we in the context of what's happening? Mr. Frisch said, can we have alternative plans? So those seem to be the top three themes that, that I heard, and certainly welcome anyone else's. But so with that, we're at 12:42. We are going to have a second go-around. We had planned a break for 1 to 3, and then to return and go from 1:30 to 2, excuse me, a break from 1 to 1:30, and then go from 1:30 to 2, and then move on to the discussion on the anti-racist policy. So let's at least go through the break. I know people are eager to have more time to talk, but that is what we plan for today. So for go-backs, I have Ms. Karen Kees-Gamara, followed by Dr. Anderson. And again, this will be till about 1 o'clock. Thank you. And Ms. Kees-Gamara.
I, I thought Ms. Corbett Sanders was ahead of me.
Well, I've done the best I can to track things, so I have her down as third. Can we just go with how I've tracked it as best as I can, please? So if you'd like to go ahead.
Okay, well, I want to start by thanking Mr. Presidio for the additional information. Obviously, we didn't have an opportunity to read that, but overall, I think my concern is, as we are going back into school, how have we budgeted for assessments on how we're going to monitor what those needs are in addressing those needs?
Yeah, so I think that that's adequately budgeted for at this point. We have a number of division-wide assessments that we've enhanced as a result of the COVID crisis for this school year. So we have literacy and math screeners that we use that also help us track the progress of students over the course of the school year, because we administer them multiple times over the course of the year. And then we have content assessments that we've created as well, that we administer to all of our students in the division. So we get a couple of different looks at performance. So I think we have the right assessment systems. And then we did a lot of work last year in, in the summer to create classroom-based assessments that teachers use with their teams to make sure that students are on track and making progress. And when they're not, then that information is used to schedule interventions and support for students as part of the school's M T S S process. And we also have data on the number of students per school that have been identified for M T S S services at the different tiers and levels. So I think we're pretty good in terms of the assessment infrastructure that we have. I don't see any additional budgetary needs there right now.
So just in listening to you, you gave me an idea, and I'm, I'm not sure it's realistic, but I will share the thought. It appears to me that we're doing a lot of work that was produced by COVID to determine what our next steps should be. Or is that a potential opening for how we might be able to address the compensation issue? Because that ties our teachers, our various employees to specific COVID-related work. And that's probably for Ms. Burden, I'm guessing. Or whomever.
You know, Ms. Kees-Gamara, that's a great thought. That may be something we need to go back and think about and look at, how to quantify that. Can we quantify that? Can we put a, a amount on that? But the, the bottom line is, we've had people, in, in a sense, engage in COVID-related work around supporting our kids. And you're just saying, hey, can't, can't we capture that some way and identify that as compensation? Either already done, or that will continue to be done as we serve kids. So let me, let, let, let us take that thought back and, and soak on it a little bit more.
Okay, so along those lines, going forward, we all know, we had an information-only work session last week with respect to our strategic plan and Goal One, and specifically with respect to student success. This may go along those same lines, identifying specifically, and I do appreciate what you just shared with us, Dr. Presidio. But I'm, given the number of students that appear to be impacted, I am concerned of how we're capturing the needs of students who weren't special education, who weren't ESOL, but have been negatively impacted by the virtual environment. And so overall, I'm, I'm a little concerned whether, whether we've identified those dollars or not. So it.
I think we're, yeah, so I, I think that we have for the summer on the data that we have at this point. Again, you know, second quarter just ended, so we'll have new assessment data. We'll have new grade data that we can look at here very soon, in a few weeks, after teachers are able to, you know, enter their grades in the grade book. And, and we need a little bit of time, of course, to analyze that information. But in a few weeks, we'll be able to have updated assessment data and grade data to look at and see how maybe our projected numbers might have shifted, and if they have shifted at all. And we'll, of course, continue to do that throughout Quarter Three and Quarter Four. But the, the main thing everybody should understand is that, you know, we're looking at the impact of COVID on all of our students, not just special populations. So we are looking at the impact on all of our students from multiple different data sources. So from our division-wide assessments, from classroom, teacher assessments, grade data, and teacher progress information that, that we collect as well. So we are looking at all students, but what we do know at this point in time, based on the data that we have currently available, is that we have seen proportionate impact on some of our students' subgroups, students with disabilities and English language learners in particular. But we are looking to monitor the needs we all give and serve all students in programs and programs.
So I appreciate that. I, I think what I'm trying to get to, and part of this may be some of the wanting I had from our last work session, talking about student success. I'm not seeing the level of breakdown, given how widespread the impact COVID obviously have, has had. I'm not seeing the widespread understanding of how that's being reflected, bringing our students into student success being reflected in our budget. And so I think that's my underlying. That's why I keep hitting at that. And it, it could be reflected in the, in what I believe is a need to have a deeper dive into that student success. to have a deeper dive into that student success component so that our community can understand this is where we're investing our dollars to move our students forward. And I'm, I'm a little unclear on that. And so that would include those assessments that may help us with our budgetary issues with respect to compensation. I'm also going to be submitting questions on specific, those specific items, as well as how we're currently investing in our academies so that I can get a better idea on how to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Keys-Gamara, Dr. Presidio. Next, we have Dr. Anderson, followed by Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Thank you so much. I, I'm glad to hear that we have until September of 2023 to utilize the SO2 funds because extended school year or summer school, that is not going to erase the deficit that our students are coming in with. And so we are going to need to have funds to last us through a multi-year approach. I, I wanted to, to talk about that, much of this that you've provided, Dr. Presidio, is speaking to support, obviously, the challenges that have been provided, that have been raised by COVID. But we also have some challenges that have been aggravated by COVID, particularly in our Title I schools and our schools with high FRM and high ALL students and our schools with student, with a high number of students, of SLIF students. Walk me through how we're being intentional in our efforts, both in the extended and summer opportunities, and then obviously beyond that, to impact those specific groups.
Sure, and I think another thing to, to point out is that in our Title I schools, they do have additional funding that is available through federal Title I dollars. And we are seeing proposals from the federal government, the new administration, to increase, significantly increase the amount of Title I dollars that our schools would receive. So if that happens, that would be great. But what we presented in the slides here today are the things that we're looking to provide in all of our schools. And of course, additional services would be supplemented with those Title I dollars and Title III dollars to serve our English language learners. So I think, you know, what I tried to do in the slides is, is outline on the special education services side, two core programs during the summer that we would be looking at. One would be the extended school year, and the other would be recovery services. The recovery services would be additional time and length of up to 33 days of services for students whose IEP teams have identified the need for additional support to make sure that students are making sufficient progress on their IEP goals. So we wouldn't just be looking at those other data points that I mentioned to Ms. Keys-Gamara, but we're looking at the IEP goal progress as well. And then for our English language learners, students would be getting not just the literacy and the math support during the summer programs that all students would be receiving, but they also would have English language development specialists working with them, resource teachers working with them. I'm making additional progress in English language development as well. So those are the major categories.
Um, I, I'm going to just, what, I need a little bit more information there because typically, all of those students that you, we've just talked about have teachers working with them. But what is the additional supplemental because of the exacerbation of what's happened with COVID? I guess that's what I'm trying to get to, particularly our SLIF students. Some of our schools here, those students have kind of dropped off a little bit, and we're not even able to locate them. I, I guess I'm looking for the intentional additional support because they have new challenges on top of the existing challenges.
Well, I think it's important to point out that, and I, and I tried to reference some of this in the document that we posted, that a lot of work is already happening with students and has happened with students. So, you know, for example, we've had 18,000 phone calls that schools have placed to parents and families of English language learners, trying to make sure that those students are sufficiently connected and getting the supports that they need right now. So those are things that have already happened using some of the additional interpretation and translation services that the board helped to fund, which we greatly appreciated. So those individual conversations and connections with families based on students' differentiated levels of need are already happening and will continue to happen throughout quarter three and quarter four as we look to serve the needs of those highly impacted students. So for example, in our in-person interventions, we're really prioritizing bringing those students like the SLIF students back who have the greatest level of need for in-person support first. And we've been providing in-person supports to those students on Mondays before we went into division-wide closure back in November. So a lot of things are already happening with those students. So I, I'm just pointing out in the summer program budget that those additional differentiated services will occur based on the levels of student needs. So if I could just have another minute or two, if, if you don't mind. When you look at the, a number of schools, like in your magisterial district that have a large number of English language learners, we know that we're going to have to differentiate services by English language development level during the summer program. And we definitely will do that. So all of those students budgetarily-wise are included in the budget proposal that I put forward, but the services would be differentiated based on student need.
Okay, thank you. One of the other questions that I have for Dr. Presidio is regarding the estimation of students to participate in these extended learning opportunities. Looking at the middle school, and you have 3,900 students. What is that based on? And, and how closely is that aligned to the reports that we received back in November regarding students who are essentially not being successful in our system, in our schools at this point?
Yeah, great question. The several data indicators, categories that we're looking at. One are those universal division-wide assessment scores. The second indicator are student grades. And then the third indicator are the anecdotal things that we're seeing from teachers, from counselors, from social workers. And all of that information ultimately will be used by the school MTSS teams to identify the specific students that we would invite in to provide the summer services for. So this is an estimation based on those three, kind of the triangulation of those three data categories, test scores, grades, and staff anecdotal observations.
So that will probably capture students that overlap in a number of areas, whether it be EL, whether it be a 504 student, students with special needs, et cetera. So thank you for that. Okay, that was, I'll stop right there. That was my time.
Thank you. Yeah, we are doing the two minutes. So we have, next, Ms. Corbett Sanders, and then that will be the last one before we take a break. Go ahead, Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Yes, thank you. And the question I have is, in the presentation of this proposal, we actually have three separate buckets of budget presentations. One is the one that was initially put forth as the proposed budget. The second was a, what was put forth last week in the goal reports. And the third is what we have today with the ESSER funding. And so I think it's imperative that we somehow bring them together. And I will say that the ESSER funding report remarkably aligns with, and I'm impressed, so thank you so much, staff, for doing this, aligns with much of what was in the report from last week, that you've now utilized ESSER funds. But when you add up all the ESSER funds, it's about $30 million. And my concern is that unless we clearly state that we see these as a $30 million now and possibly another $30 million in the summer of '22, that people will say, well, you have all these ESSER funds, so you should use those. And we have less of, and people don't understand how they can be utilized. So what I'm asking for is how difficult would it be to revise the budget proposal to include this ESSER piece in it and to also annotate it in a way that shows where some of these fundings are going concern fundings or multi-year funds so that people understand what our budget proposal is a bit more? And then we can add our amendments in the three areas that we discussed earlier. Ms. Burden, can you address that?
Yeah, we could do that. I mean, you know, from a technical perspective, it's a, it would be an add of 84 million on the expenditure side and an add of 84 million on the revenue side. But as far as allocating it, I mean, we, we aren't there yet. I mean, there, the, the priorities that have been listed, and that's just a general list, are, are, in, in my belief, well in excess of the 84 million. And so a lot of conversations at the senior leadership table have to happen before any final decisions are made as to what would be presented to the school board as to the recommendation. So I, I, I doubt that we could add 84 million of definitive plans in this short time period.
The 84 million of definitive plan. What I'm asking for is the, you've got the budget proposal from the superintendent, and there are two unmet needs in there that are clear. There are a few. The, the remediation in summer programming as well as compensation. The compensation is something that this board has to take on on its own, although they may have some flexibility with ESSER. But the remediation piece, it's out there that we don't care about it because it's unfunded. But the reality is, it is funded through, just through a different vehicle. And from a transparency point of view,
Right.
I think it's important to put it all in one place so that we don't have that misunderstanding in our community.
Ms. Corbett Sanders, thank you. I know what you're saying. We need strategic communications around what we're doing with extended learning. Weeks after we got ESSER, we've got already 30 some million lined up and immediate plans to do extended learning. And to be honest, we need to take a strategic look through September 2023. When you do that, almost all of that money could be spoken for just in doing the needs. So I got your point. We need to really say, and to be honest, when we look at compensation and ESSER, it's very complicated. It's very layered. I think we may honestly have to look for more leverage from our local and state funding sources. And the board may have to challenge staff to go back and really go through that budget again, go through those program budgets that we're doing with you, and see where we can find opportunities to revisit assumptions about our, as, as Abra says, normal business operations, and come up with a way to find reoccurring salary and compensation. We don't have that yet, but I think that's part of where we may go if we don't get that extra help from the local and state folks. But I, I hear your point. There's really more in ESSER spoken for today as we look out between now and 2023 than what we're giving ourselves credit for. We've just given you step one, which is already 40% of the ESSER funding two weeks after really getting the grant amount. And we need to show that whole plan so the community understands there's not just a lot of leftover money here to do other things or for the board to do other things as well. We do need.
And the other piece of it is to do exactly what you just suggested, which is find some other ways of tightening our belts elsewhere so that we can address the compensation piece.
Right.
And, and it does, we should be asking for support from our funders.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everyone, for the last two hours of a really important conversation. We'll go ahead and take a pause until 1:30. We'll reconvene here at 1:30 to continue the conversation about the budget. And then as planned, right now, at 2:00 PM, we will shift to talk about the planning for the anti-racist policy work. Thank you very much.